We'll call this meeting to order. This is the Wednesday and April 19th meeting of the Concord City Planning Board. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Chairman Woodfin.
Here.
Vice Chair Foss.
Here.
Counselor Champlin.
Here.
Member Hicks.
Here.
Member Smithmire.
Here.
Member Savage.
Here.
Members Fox.
Here.
All right, have a quorum, we'll open the meeting. Everyone welcome, April, ready to roll? All right, so first item on the agenda tonight is approval of the minutes from the previous meeting. Would someone like to make a motion to approve those minutes as submitted?
Second.
Motion's been made in second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
That motion carries. Quick agenda overview tonight, item 5A. We're gonna pull item 5A. We need a motion to postpone to the May meeting. Would someone like to make a motion to postpone that item, which is Novus Group on behalf of the Roman Catholic Bishop of Manchester till the May meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, it all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries and item, nope, 6C, we'll address that when 6C comes. We do have something that we're gonna address a little later in the agenda, but if anybody's here for the casino, which is item 7C on our agenda, we did not receive in time for the meeting to review the report that we'd requested, so the casino is gonna be recommended for continuation till next month, so we will not be taking public testimony at that, on that item for this month. So if you're here for that, I don't wanna make you sit, even though you'd love to stay, come on, even though you'd love to stay, if you're here for that item, we're not gonna take any public testimony on that tonight, we're gonna do it next month. So you'll have to come back, though, okay? All right.
That's why he's the chair.
Okay, and we'll tell the applicant if they get here, I haven't seen the applicant, but if they get here, we'll do it formally at that point, so. Okay, so that will move us right into our overview, excuse me, determination of completeness by consent. So again, item 5A's been pulled off the agenda, so 5B, 5C. If someone would like to make, anybody here for item 5B or 5C consent agenda items have been reviewed by the board, reviewed by Architectural Design Review with recommendations?
That's ADR.
Oh, determination of completion, I'm sorry. So determination of completeness, so we have two items on determination of completeness, 5B and 5C. Would someone like to make a motion to find those applications complete and set the public hearing for the May meeting?
So moved.
And not developments of regional impact.
And not developments of regional impact.
And not developments of regional impact.
And that motion was made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, so again, now on the design review applications by consent, we're gonna pull item 6C off of the agenda item if we, for consent?
Correct.
Okay? So 6C's been pulled off, so we'll address A, B, and D. If anyone's here for 6A, 6B, or 6D, those applications will be approved by consent with recommendations from Architectural Design. If you have any problems with those, if you could make yourself known. If not, any member of the board wish to pull any? Yes, Carol?
I'd like to pull 6A, just for a comment.
6A, yep, okay, so that's classic signs, we'll pull that off. So 6B and 6D, anybody have any questions or concerns about those? If not, we'll take a motion to approve those with Architectural Design Review comments.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, it all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, let's address 6A, if we could read that into the record?
Yes, 6A, sorry, scrolled down. Classic Signs on behalf of Service Credit Union requests ADR approval for a new 40 square foot, it's actually 40.11 square foot internally illuminated wall sign at 8 Merchants Way in the Gateway Performance District.
Okay, Carol, question about that?
It just seemed, it appeared to me, and maybe this was just the way I was looking at it, but it appeared to me that the lettering was sort of in italics, that it was sort of slanted. Maybe I was looking at it weird, but with that massive, with the massive vertical lines of the entrance, it just seemed to me that vertically aligned letters would look, it just looked weird to me. So I don't know if they're truly slanted, or if it was just something in the rendering, but I just wanted to raise.
I think you're correct.
The top.
I think you're correct that they're slanted. Maybe you should ask, open the public hearing and ask if the...
Yeah, is the applicant here? Yep, come on up. So we'll open the public hearing, and welcome to the table. If you could state your name for the record?
Good evening, my name is Ben DeValle. I am the lead on this project from Classic Signs.
Is that the Service Credit Union logo, or is that just interpretation?
That is their logo, yes, sir. There is no italicizing in their logo. I am not sure why it may appear that way. It is just, it's just the font of their logo.
Okay, so they would really be oriented?
It would look exactly as it looks in the drawing.
I think he's saying that he didn't put any italicize, but that their logo is slightly italicized.
That's what you're saying, correct?
My guess is you're questioning maybe like the font of the S, because if you look at the, well, the sides of the Es are slanted as well, yes.
Yeah, it just...
That's just their logo.
Okay.
Weird. The layout and the colors are to their corporate specs, we had no design input in it at all from that standpoint.
Well, it is what it is.
Is what it is, yeah.
I still think it looks a little strange.
Dooley noted.
We didn't even get to adjust it on this one.
We'll make sure that's in the notes. Okay, any other questions from the applicant? Thank you very much for your testimony, we'll close the public hearing. If someone would like to make a motion to...
Sign the sheet.
Yeah, if, actually, we don't close the public hearing, 'cause I gotta ask if anybody has any questions or concerns. And if not, then we'll close the public hearing. And would someone like to make a motion to approve that sign as submitted?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded by Carol. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, 6B we did, 6C was pulled off. Heather, can you give us an update on that?
Sure, that is Serrato Signs on behalf of Starbucks Coffee.
Thank you.
That is, I believe, maybe store number 68776, requesting ADR approval for a new 19.63 square foot internally illuminated wall sign, a new 32.76 square foot internally illuminated wall sign, and a new 34.09 square foot internally illuminated wall sign at 68 Store Street in the Oprytry Corridor Performance District. So you have a note here, refer to ZBA case 2423 for variance to allow 86.48 square foot of combined sign area. So ADR had made a recommendation to approve it, subject to the condition that drive-through signs on the side of the building were removed, because they felt like it was excessive signage and that it was clear where this drive-through is and that additional signage was not needed for it. The applicants did not oppose that condition, and it was, that was their recommendation. We've since learned that that variance was predicated on their argument that they needed the extra signage because the drive-through signs were for safety. So part of the criteria that they used to meet, the criteria for the variance was that those were safety-related signs. So if we remove them, their variance will no longer be valid.
Right, yeah, okay.
So that's why we recommend to remove it, remove that condition, and just go ahead and approve it as submitted.
Okay, so approve it as submitted without the Architectural Design Review recommendation of removal of signs.
Correct.
Anybody have any questions about that? Any comments or questions from the audience? Can you, I'll address it in a minute. Okay, if someone would like to make a motion to approve that as submitted without Architectural Design Review recommendations?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, it all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, that brings us to our public hearing section again. Mr. Golin, I addressed the audience earlier, and I'll do it again now that we're here for the public hearing section. Staff has not reviewed the report that we requested. We've got, we've got a motion, not even a motion, I'm gonna make the motion that we delay the, delay the hearing until next month, until staff has the ability to review it and, and address the issues that we would ask to look at. Sure, come on up.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Yeah.
So for the record, Nick Golin, TF Moran.
Yeah, I got it.
As part of our presentation this evening, we were hoping to verify the fact that the required study had been provided, third-party review of the study had also been provided. John Cronin, our attorney, is on his way here, who was, had the intent to speak to those elements, and that they had been addressed successfully. We've been working diligently with the engineering staff to resolve those outstanding comments. I guess I'm taken aback that that was the choice from the standpoint of, we've been working very hard to resolve all these items, and to not have the opportunity to be heard this evening is rather frustrating.
You know, I mean, there's certainly no problem as far as being heard, we, I already sent people home from the public testimony perspective, so it's not gonna get approved tonight, we're gonna have to have it again next month to hear any of that information. I'm not comfortable doing anything until I've seen it, staff's looked at it, and staff's given us the approval, given us the, kind of the rundown on what exactly is gonna happen.
Understood, Chair.
So, I mean, that's, that's where we are, I'd rather not waste the time going through it now and then not have the public here to hear what Mr. Cronin's got to say, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna, you know, say that that's, that's the tact we're gonna take, that's the avenue that we're gonna go down.
Understood. May we assume then, when we return, that is the sole item we are seeking to discuss?
Absolutely.
No.
No, well, we're gonna address public, the public testimony.
It's a sneaky question, Nick.
The public testimony.
There's three or four outstanding issues.
Very honest and transparent request.
The, my issue is what you're gonna present, we still may have some questions that are gonna come up.
I can appreciate that.
I just wanna make sure that relative to the reason we're being continued and understood
100%, that we could certainly make strides with resolving all of those other items tonight.
Yeah.
But it's just a...
Frustrating.
Yeah.
I hear you.
I'm the guy who wears his emotions on his sleeve, you can see that I'm frustrated.
Yeah.
I know our team and our, certainly our applicant are gonna be equally frustrated.
Yeah.
We understand your decision, and we won't ask for something else, but relative to what we're returning for, we just wanna make sure that we are being direct as to what that element is. This emergency services proposal seemed to be that case.
Yeah.
I realize the planner, Heather, jumped in immediately to say no. If we come back here, we wanna make sure it's a poignant conversation. We don't wanna take any more of your time than this.
Again, and I can't, I can't confirm it's gonna be 100%, but I can certainly, will address the issues that need to be addressed to make us comfortable moving forward.
I understand that, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak on behalf of our team.
Perfect, okay. So I'm gonna make a motion that we table this, table? Continue?
No, just continue.
Continue. Continue the hearing for next month, is there a second on that? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and again, so if anybody's here for the casino project tonight, we're not gonna be hearing that on the agenda. Okay, so that moves us into our public hearing section, item 7A. If we could read that into the record?
7A, Sebago Technics on behalf of Encompass Health requests, requests minor site plan approval and two waivers from the site plan regulations for the redevelopment of their rehabilitation courtyard located at 254 Pleasant Street in the Institutional District. Staff does recommend the application be determined complete, not a development of regional impact, and to open the public hearing.
Okay, so we've got a determination of completeness component, it is not a development of regional impact. Would someone like to make a motion to find the application complete, not a development of regional impact, and open the public hearing? So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, we'll open the public hearing, if we could get a staff update?
Sure. Encompass Health, which is in the, sits in the Concord Hospital campus area in the back, is re, rehabbing their rehabilitation courtyard, and just due to the area, it triggered minor site plan, they're just bringing it up to their standards in short. That's pretty much what they're doing, there's some drainage improvements to go along with this work as well.
Okay, looks pretty straightforward. Any questions? Is the applicant here?
They should be.
Hang on, hang on just a second. Yeah, go ahead.
I should say, they are, the two waivers, they are asking for two waivers related to stormwater, due to the size of, the small size of what they're impacting, whereas it's a courtyard, not a roadway, they've asked to, a waiver from our off-site flows to allow off-site discharge for the two and 10-year storms to exceed the previous conditions, and we support this waiver, and they are also asking a waiver from our pre-treatment section, and we are supporting that waiver with the condition that they get an inspection-maintenance plan, and they increase the sumps of their basins to two or three feet.
Okay, so we've opened the public hearing, we've welcomed the applicant up. I was almost to the point where I was like, maybe I can have them stay right there, but that, that condition of, subject to condition that an inspection and maintenance plan for the stormwater improvements is provided, I wanted to bring you up, at least let you address that. Tell us a little bit about the project, if you could? Or actually, welcome to the table, if you could state your names for the record?
Thank you, my name is Steve Harding, I work for Sebago Technics, and this is Dennis DuBois with Encompass Healthcare. I brought a flash, a thumb drive and could do a presentation, but I'm not sure if you need that.
I don't think so, unless we come up with some questions.
Okay, so basically, as the gentleman mentioned, Encompass Healthcare has a rehab facility for therapy for their patients in this courtyard area, which is about a quarter of an acre, and they're upgrading it to the corporate standard that Encompass Healthcare has, so there'll be a lot of improvements made, there'll be various textures, surface textures that people can walk on, they have stairs, they have ramps, those types of things. So it'll be a much improved facility for the, for the rehabilitation hospital. The two waivers, what we're asking for, we have just over 2,000 square feet of impervious area increased, and we've created four rain gardens to treat that water. One of the waivers is a slight increase in the peak flow from this area, I think it's two hundreds of a CFS for the two-year storm and eight hundreds for the 10-year storm of a CFS. And the other waiver we're asking for is to waive the pre-treatment area for this, and because it's all encompassed within a pedestrian area, there'll be no vehicle access, you won't have the typical pollutants that you might have in a parking lot, you won't have oil drippings or that sort of thing, and there'll be a controlled amount of sand and salt placed there, so I know staff is supportive of that, under the condition that we create a maintenance plan for the hospital to use, which we certainly can do, that's a fairly standard, standard item, and then to increase the sumps on the catch basins, we've created in the rain gardens to two feet, so that, that's no problem either.
Okay, so several different elevations, am I looking at that right? On the, in the patio area, there's several different elevations?
Yeah, there's a, there's a pavilion with stairs on it, so you, and a ramp that you can go, you know, practice how you're, would negotiate that as you're recovering from whatever injury. There's a place for stone patio, stone pavers, there's concrete surface, there's a roughened aggregate, exposed aggregate surface, they have a rubble area.
I was looking at it, I'm saying, why are there all these surfaces, why are they, I'm thinking it was a patio that you're gonna go out and sit on, it's a, it's a working patio, if you will.
Working patio.
Okay.
It'll be a nice area, there's a...
I think I've ever seen so many surfaces textures on, on one plan set, I'm looking at the differences here, okay.
I had the same experience.
I got you. A working patio, yeah, that's a good call. Okay, questions? Suzanne?
Yeah, I just noticed that a lot of the plants that they've specked out are perennials and they're not shrubs, and they're listed as shrubs.
Whoop.
And it does make a difference.
It does make a difference. What...
I mean, everything is listed as a shrub, and I think there were two shrubs in that whole list.
Are any trees or anything being taken out? Looks like there's several good-sized trees.
There's a couple of ash trees that are there, they're difficult to work around due to the grade changes and the improvements that the, that we're trying to seek, we've replaced those with multiple trees, and we believe have a pretty robust landscaping plan that's been proposed, and the planning staff had a few comments on it, we've adjusted those based on those comments.
I think you should just label them as perennials and not as shrubs, if you can...
We could certainly correct that.
Yeah, and then they mentioned that it has to be signed by a landscape architect.
Yeah, understood.
Because it might depend on the spacing of them.
Yep.
As well, so.
Okay, any other questions? Byron?
More of a comment, considering the prevalence of the emerald ash borer, it's probably a good idea to get rid of the ash trees anyway.
That's what we were thinking, anyway, and they didn't, and they didn't work very well for the plan and just for the reasons you mentioned, and we're trying to save them, I guess. We thought we could replace them with a new planning plan.
Carol?
You could use them as blowdowns for people to step over.
Yeah, there you go.
Having just recovered from a knee replacement, it's doing a lot of bushwhacking.
Sounds like somebody who knows what she's talking about.
Yeah, I had a hip replaced, so I don't know what you're going through.
Okay, other questions? Comments? Any member of the audience have any questions or concerns about this application? Nope? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, thank you very much for your testimony, we'll send you back. Oh, I do wanna just make sure that, again, under the waiver request, that staff supports the waiver, which is the pre-treatment waiver, subject to the condition that the inspection-maintenance plan for stormwater improvements is provided, you mentioned that, didn't you? You mentioned that the stormwater, the stormwater maintenance plan was gonna be provided?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other comments or questions from the board? If not, we'll look over to our waiver request here. Okay, 4.1, is to grant the following waivers to the site plan regulations using criteria RSA 67444, 3E2 as guidance? So that's 22083, which is off-site flows, and 22084 for pre-treatment. Would someone like to make a motion to grant those waivers as outlined?
So moved.
Motion has been made, we have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. 4.2 is to grant the minor site plan approval for the proposed renovation, renovated rehabilitation courtyard and associated site improvements at 254 Pleasant Street, subject to the following precedent and subsequent conditions, and those are outlined in precedent conditions one through six, and subsequent conditions one, two, and three. Would someone like to make a motion to grant minor site plan approval as outlined?
So moved, second.
Motion has been made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, you are all set, let me just check, hold on, make sure, yep, I missed anything? You're all set, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, let's move right along to the next item on our agenda, which is item 7B, if we could read that into the record?
Yes, New Hampshire Land Consultants, PLLC, on behalf of Petticoat Realty Partners, LLC, request major site plan and major subdivision approval for a 68-unit townhome development at 150 Fisherville Road in the General Commercial District. Staff does recommend that the application be determined complete, not a development of regional impact, and to open the public hearing. I'll give you staff update after that.
All right, is the applicant here? Come on up.
I can...
All right, we've got a determination of completeness component and not a development of regional impact. Would someone like to make a motion to find the application complete, not a development of regional impact, and open the public hearing? Yes, Mr. Chair? Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, we'll open the public hearing and get a quick staff update if we could.
Sure, I, I'll let them present their own project, I'd just like to say, they've been to ADR a few times, they met with staff a few times, they have been very receptive to a lot of comments and suggestions on the layout, on the passages of the buildings, the orientation of the buildings. We still have a lot more comments on the layout, which is why I hope we can discuss some of those things this evening. They also have a condo plat, which I didn't actually get them the comments for that until today, so engineering is still reviewing, our consultants are still reviewing their plan for engineering comments, which we'll get to them as, as soon as we have those available as well. So we are not recommending approval tonight, just because we do have to finish getting through the, their comments from an engineering perspective, but we're, you know, very much, you know, happy with the way the project's going and with their cooperation with us on various aspects of the plan.
Great, well, welcome to the table, if you guys could state your names for the record?
Scott Frankowitz from New Hampshire Land Consultants.
Jake McManus, Compass Development, representing the ownership group.
Great, well, tell us a little bit about your project, I think we've seen this before.
Yeah, and I think the application was accepted...
Yeah, and I think the application was accepted in February.
Was it accepted?
Yeah.
Oh, no, you've been double, double accepted.
That's good.
Double secret, double secret accepted for, determined to complete. Well, now we're extra complete, so feel free.
I didn't bring anything, I don't know, last time I were here, you were putting it up on the screen.
There's a link on their computer there, I don't know if you're still signed in.
Their password is, it's confusing. It's written on there. Sorry, do you mind if I put it in there?
Yeah.
It's a zero, not a no.
I like this.
It's the tricky conquered with a zero.
Super complicated password, that's right on the computer.
Super, super complicated, that's written right on it.
Could just be...
That's security.
I saw some color plans when I was looking at this the other day, Heather, where are those?
Excuse me?
Oh, architectural, yeah, sorry, got it.
That's the black and white draft elevations?
Why don't you hook up at the screen?
The renderings.
Renderings, ah, that's it.
Oh, yeah, they have them on.
Oh, yes, I remember this one.
Again, Scott Franco, it's from New Hampshire Land Consultants, on the team is, is, uh, myself and Jeff Burns is the engineer of record, Damon Burt is the wetland scientist, Tom Sokolowski is soil scientist, and Kim from TEP is the traffic engineer. Uh, like we said, we have the application accepted, we came to the preliminary meeting back in November, we had the application submitted in January, uh, in November we came in and talked about a lot of different things, the, the general layout has stayed the same, things have shifted around a little bit, but general layout of what we talked about is, is the same, circular driveway. Uh, in March we requested an extension for the meeting due to receiving the engineering and planning comments, we hadn't had time to work through them, uh, then we resubmitted on April 3rd. Uh, since April 3rd, we have received alteration of train permit, uh, the comments, as Heather just said, from the condo subdivision, and we did attend, uh, Architectural Design Review Committee meeting, Jake attended that, and we got some comments from that. Uh, just to kinda go over, if I can get, I can open that. So the site plan stuff's not attached to the, just the architectural renderings?
No, the, the site plans are the one above that, yeah, are right there, whoops.
Accept.
Holy cow.
Come there, yeah.
Download it.
Actually, I have it.
There you go.
There you go.
Actually, those are architectural, I'll just go back to the rendering. So the existing lot is a 7.04 acre piece of, of property at the corner of Fisherville and Pinehurst. Uh, it was cleared, I think, 10, 15 years ago, since then it's grown in, got about 10, 15 foot high growth on it. Um, to the west is Fisherville, to the north is Pinehurst, and then behind it is Hartwood Lane, the apartments, and then to the south of it is the open space that was left over from the open space subdivision that was to the south of this. Uh, we surveyed it la- uh, last summer and did all utility work last summer, and then, uh, designed the, the project over the fall and winter. So what we're proposing is access off of Pinehurst, which, one of these, this is probably the best one to show that, this is Fisherville to the bottom right, this is Pinehurst to the left, we're accessing off of Pinehurst, which there was an easement left when that was built for, for this property to specifically use that access. What we're proposing, our variety of building, there's some four-unit buildings, some eight-unit, and some six-unit buildings, as well as a clubhouse to the south of the site with a pool and then an outdoor patio area. Um, there's two four-unit buildings, there's two six-unit buildings, six eight-unit buildings. And then in addition to the parking that's in front of the units, you got a garage plus a space in front of each unit, and we've added additional parking to the southwest of the site, and then in front of the, uh, clubhouse, there's parking, and then to the south side of the property, there's also a little more parking. The clubhouse is 1,200 square feet. Uh, green space proposed in the middle of the development, um, was a lot of different things happened with this. When we originally came in, we had the clubhouse directly, as you came in the boulevard, you'd see the clubhouse in front of you. Uh, that sense has been put to the backside of the site, and this is an open space now with walkways throughout it. Uh, it was a discussion with Heather about a walkway i- inside and pedestrian move, moving around, and there's some revisions happening with, with the walkways, but generally this is what, what we ended up with. Um, one of the just big discussions too was the architectural view of, of the property. Um, you can kinda see it best here where, we first came in with, with, uh, buildings looking just like Abbott Village with a flat face. Um, since then, the developers went back and, and put eaves on each unit, dressed it up more like a front of the unit, so if you're looking at it from Fisherville or from Pinehurst or from the apartments or, or out behind here in the woods, it's gonna look like the front of a unit, um, with a little patio in front of it. Uh, like I said, we had Architectural Design Review, a few things came out of that sidewalk, different, um, ballard lighting they want on the walkways within the interior, um, and some additional trees. The drainage system, it has been approved by AOT, uh, it's pretty, it's pretty complicated system, the site is so flat that it was hard to design, but we've got filtration systems, filtera systems in each corner, uh, which feed to dry wells, which eventually feed to infiltration pond at the southeast corner of the property. Uh, we are working with engineering on sewer water, uh, and all that design, and we've resubmitted the plans and, and waiting on a review from that. This project will be in three phases. Um, initially, the first phase will be buildings A and B, I think are these two, right? These two buildings, and they'll build the entire road around for, for a number of reasons, and do all the utilities and drainage. Uh, so all the utility drainage and roadway will be in place in these buildings. And then Phase Two will be...
Let's, uh, let's just interrupt you for a sec, can you, uh, open up the plans? Though, if you go on to, back to that agenda item, and click, oh, there's no plans on there, why is there no plans?
That's what he was mentioning, the plans aren't there.
Hmm, okay.
The plans should be there.
No, I know, that's right, look, it's right here, see? It's not on this one.
Oh, my god.
It's on mine, Alec.
That is crazy. They were definitely there the last time I logged, I don't know where they are.
More importantly, what was that Mark Zuckerberg, Delu's Very Bad News, what was that?
Pay a lot of money.
So, so while they're doing that, do you mind if I?
Yeah.
Share a few things, so at the...
It is about Mark Zuckerberg?
It's not.
No, okay, go ahead.
So there was quite a lot of discussion at the ADR meeting about, about the layout and the open spaces, were you guys gonna talk about any of that in more detail?
Yeah, so, I mean, we, we've done an evaluation, I think, with Scott on the open space, we heard your comments, and the challenge that we're faced right now was with the drainage. So, uh, the drainage that Scott just mentioned and being able to put in, um, the park, I think was a recommendation, um, a playground interferes a lot with the drainage that he had designed currently. Um, so, one, one comment that we took, I think it was specifically from you, Heather, was to move, um, the access off Fisherville Road and centralize that sidewalk.
Yeah.
And, and we're able to change a little design with the drainage.
Hold, hold closer to the mic.
Um, to allow that to work, so we are, we've, we've incorporated that.
Oh, you're...
Um, the ones that actually circle kind of the perimeter, uh, we're, we're challenged with that right now, and I don't think that's going to be able to happen, um...
Yeah, I think what would be helpful for us in reviewing it and, and understanding that is if there was more graphic depictions on your plan of how the drainage is working. For instance, in one case, I, I think I made some comments about, and you said, oh, well the drainage there, you can't really tell what, it's just so shallow, it's, there's, there's swales that you're proposing, that you can't really tell where they, oh, I know, it's a wild seed mix, and there's like an arrow that says wild seed mix here, and I'm like, how is the contractor, I can't tell, how's the contractor gonna tell, because I can't tell with the, where the actual swale is, it seems like you have some really wide, broad areas that you're, she's almost just sheet flowing. So, maybe a little bit, spot elevations or a bit, a better understanding of what the difference in those areas are, and...
Sure.
And can you, can you modify some of those to not make them that kind of shallow sheet flow drainage, but maybe concentrated a little more so you can provide other, I mean, there's a lot of space out there, and it's a flat site, so, it seems like you could do some of that.
We were, we were struggling, and you can probably speak to this, we, we originally, this was a big fill site, so we were, we were importing, uh, material so much to the point that the job almost became impractical.
Right.
The numbers weren't calculating out, so, uh, we challenged Scott to kinda go back and let's look at some alternate drainage, um, options, and, and what we've settled on, this infiltera system.
That's very interesting background.
Uh, right, so, I mean, if you wanna speak a little more to that.
So on the plans that we resubmitted on, in the beginning of, of this month, you'll see there's a lot more, the, the original plans had low sw- shallow swales around the outside of the project, now there's actually infrastructure, drainage infrastructure, there's dry wells, there's infiltration pipes and swales in that exterior area, where you really can't put a play, a playground or anything. You wouldn't wanna playground on the outside of the property anyway.
I think what they were, ADR, I think what they were saying, you weren't at that meeting, were you? I don't think you were.
No, I wasn't.
Uh, they were, they were looking at those four quadrants, uh, one of, two of them you obviously have, I think...
The pond.
Um...
So if you're looking at, at...
I'll just step up here. So, I think they were sort of looking at these types of spaces, but also, I don't know if they necessarily meant put a playground in. I know that Claude was making some comments, like you could put some boulders in here, or make features in, in this space that were more attractive for kids, maybe that type of wildlife, you know, not wildlife, but, um, I don't know, what are those playgrounds called, when they're just like?
Natural...
Yeah, yeah, like logs and boulders, and stuff like that for kids to climb on. But I think with regard to making different character, stick characters for the others, I think they were thinking of like these two areas.
Go ahead, Alex, cut her. So, I'm, I'm looking at, I'm looking at, I'm sorry, go ahead, Carol, you gonna say something about that?
Well, I'm just thinking that that flat open area is a great place for kids to kick a ball around, if you...
Bingo, that's exactly what we said too, yeah.
If you go littering it up with boulders and logs, it doesn't make sense to me. I mean, you could put boulders and logs in that corner place.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
Um, out near the woods, I mean, that makes sense, but not in the green place, cause that's...
They did think there was, should be more trees in the green space though, to provide shade for the kids kicking ball around.
Well, as someone who manages soccer fields, trees are a big problem with soccer fields.
Yeah.
So...
But these aren't soccer fields.
Yeah.
Except if they're gonna kick a ball, they're gonna, I mean, those get in the way.
Eventually gonna be a soccer field, or a baseball field.
These seem like personal, um, choices that some people want to impose on the applicant, so...
So let me ask, let me step back and ask the question, you started, and the reason I asked you to pull up the plan set, so I'm looking at, if you, if anybody on the board here, it's, uh, in your plan set, number four is color-coded, so we've got two yellow buildings and the whole front of the property on Fisherville is what's gonna be Phase One, is that, there you go, so is that, I guess they're orange there.
We don't have the plan.
Yeah, you do.
Yeah, it's on our...
So that's, that's Phase One, right?
Correct, yes.
So what's the, what's the elevation change from Fisherville as I'm looking into Phase One, say, right in the middle there? Is it, is it the flat elevation, or is it gonna be?
Pretty, pretty much, um...
Okay, so no, no...
No, but we're not promoting.
Burms, no nothing?
We had talked about a berm, so that's all gone now, because we dressed up the front of the units.
Okay, all right, so in, in Phase One, it's gonna be the whole front of the building and the extra space over there, Phase Two then is three buildings and the, and the, um, the pool house, and then the final five buildings in Phase, in Phase Three.
Correct, and the road will be built in Phase One.
And the roads, the road all the way around will be built, and all the paved driveways as well, and?
No.
No, just the road, okay. How about sidewalks after?
Um, the sidewalk off Fisherville Road that we're proposing to move more centrally located, that would be in Phase One now.
Okay.
Um, and then these, the sidewalks that, uh, are in the courtyard would be...
So where's the sidewalk off Fisherville gonna be relocated to?
Currently, yeah, it's to the south of this, it's gonna be between building B and C.
Okay, so right in the middle?
Yeah.
Okay.
And it'll connect right into the internal one.
That makes sense.
I think it was a great suggestion, yeah.
Yeah, it's a great suggestion, put some trees around it.
Exactly.
Okay, continue on, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, but I do wanna get everybody on the same page.
So just kinda the, on sheet five, it's the drainage plan, it's, it's pretty busy, but it will, will show you all the different things that was going on. At each of the corners, there's a filtera system, uh, which is, is a more or less septic tank that has filter media in it that will give us our pre-treatment, uh, or treatment actually, before it goes into dry wells and infiltration, uh, pipes and trenches on the exterior of the site, and then eventually down to the pond in the bottom. And that's doing the same thing on the, on the west or east side of the property as well. Two of the corners have dumpsters in them. Uh, this area here, potentially maybe something that could be a, a playground or something, there is, there is an opportunity in that south.
And it's dead flat, huh?
Southeast.
It's pretty funny.
Southeast corner, we do have the swale coming around here, but there is that little triangle there that, that something could definitely be put in. Uh, there's drainage in the middle as well, with a little depression in the middle with dry wells, and, and that's more or less just collecting the runoff from in, inside and directing it out to the pond.
And again, the, the ideas on the, on the playgrounds and things like that, I mean, if this is targeting families and small kids, yes, playgrounds, if it's fa- if it's older oriented, maybe some garden space or, you know, sitting space, something like that. I mean, you guys...
Yeah.
Make it as attractive as you can, we don't wanna dictate some of that, but we wanna look at all the, all the options.
Understood.
So that's the drainage, and, and then, uh, utilities is obviously getting reviewed, um, by the city and, and everybody else. We have done, uh, there was a request for a fire review, uh, SFC did a review, and we're working right now with Empire Capital or Capital Empire, the fire, to do flow test. Um, so that's in the works.
I'll open it to the board for questions.
Okay, yeah, questions from the board? No? Got them all out of your system already? Okay, any member of the audience have any questions or concerns about this application? No? Just as a reminder, if anybody came in late, we're not gonna be hearing the casino tonight, if you're here for that. Okay, um, great, thank you for the, for the, uh, for the presentation, questions and comments from staff, anything?
No, I would just look forward to seeing what your next iteration looks like, and it's been nice working with you guys, I think you're very responsive, and the more communication we have, I think, the more helpful it is to understand where you're coming from.
It gets us along, keeps moving things.
I did get some feedback from residents that was addressed to me and not to the board about open space and green space and improving those things, um, and landscaping and stuff like that. So, there are people out there in the public who are, um, concerned about the same sort of severe presentation that the existing Abbott Road development has.
Gotcha.
I actually did, I'm sorry, I did have one question about, I, I've made several comments about putting trees in the landscape islands and the paving areas. Is that something? But, I, I can't recall exactly what the comment has been about where the, um, cleanouts are for the water system, I think. You've got something in the landscape islands, not trees, there's like day lilies instead of trees. In your pretty picture, you have some, like six-foot shrubs, but on the actual plan, there's just day lilies. So, I don't know if there's...
A rock wall, in the pretty picture.
I, well, this is in the, the...
Yeah, the other one, yeah.
Um, so, I mean, could those, I'm concerned that there's not gonna be enough soil in, there should be trees there. The short story is, there should be some type of ornamental or something to provide shade, I mean, you've got these huge...
Where, whereabouts, this is the, the most current, there's a couple edits, we're gonna do this with the sidewalk.
So here, in here, you've got this kind of, these areas with just no shade trees. In your pictures, you're showing large pink shrubs there, but in your plan, you've actually only got five day lilies, which is hardly anything. And these you're gonna, um...
Sorry, I was just looking at, see what, what that...
H R is Hemer Calis.
Okay.
So you've got five day lilies there. In your picture, you've got really pretty landscaping shown there.
Okay.
Five day lilies is not gonna cut it. You've also got these, um, what, I don't really know technically what they are, cleanout.
Yeah.
Some things. I said, you know, hey, why don't you put those in the paved areas so that you can actually put soil in there, in the areas like five by, six by six or something, you could put a tree there, you could put a, a cherry or, you know, some type of ornamental tree could go in each of these, it'd be really nice. I mean, that's the only thing that's gonna make this area seem less, you know, harsh with just all the paving. Uh, you know, you don't want something that's gonna, you don't want a big tree.
Right.
But something small, even if it's a, I don't know.
Something small and hardy that's gonna...
Yeah.
Yeah, provide something, cause five day lilies is, especially in the wintertime, even just having branches there is gonna be better than just nothing.
What's the recommendation, Suzanne?
We're just waiting.
I was, I knew. I wasn't even going to, I wasn't even going to ask.
Well, and it's, it's the pavement, but there's a lot of built environment in this.
Around it, yeah.
Lot. And I think the only thing that's really going to mitigate it over time are not daylilies, not shrubs, not ground covers, but trees. And it's the biggest bang for your buck, because the other stuff, it takes so long for them to mature. So, I think in, I mean, I would still try to think about some of the Nados that are drought tolerant, but in the, those open spaces, there's no reason why trees can't be planted so that they're around, if you need the open space, to have them around the periphery, because it will be so hot and so inhospitable and.
But what about these locations?
What's that?
What about these locations?
So, on the, on the renderings, can you go to slide two of the renderings?
Oh, you mean in the front, where they have the little trees and shrubs? Yeah, I would, I would not do shrubs in any of those areas primarily because of the snow and the plowing, but small trees, amelocias.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
Anything that is going to have a canopy is way more important.
You do have space there. It's not like right up against the units. Is someone going to have to maintain them and improve them at some point? Yeah. But there is room there if you have enough soil volume. And I don't know if you need to relocate that other infrastructure. I would assume you need to relocate that somewhere so you can put landscaping in there. But that would do a great deal to mitigate.
Oh, sorry, Alex.
The appearance of those. What are we doing?
Sorry, yeah. I just wanted to have them look at the renderings to see, this is what you're talking about. I wanted to.
Yeah, they have nice big shrub there.
Can't show it to them, no.
You've got like grasses and shrubs.
They can see it.
But still, Suzanne's saying, don't put that shrub there.
Right, put a tree there.
Put a tree there, because the snow and salt is going to kill it.
Let me ask you a question. So, it shows here with one car in that parking lot. Is that wide enough to put two cars in the parking lots?
No.
No?
Some of the units are, on the eight-unit buildings, there's two-car garages on the ends. So, there's actually room for four.
Okay, so what's the next slide? Is it two, I think, or two of ten?
So, those are the ones that you're showing, like, pretty stuff there, but that's not what you've got in the plan.
So, put a tree in and some mulch in, and I write in that, mulch and trees, Suzanne?
Yeah, well, there's plenty of room for a small tree in there.
And some daylilies under it.
Yeah, that's like a ground cover, but yeah.
Look at me.
I think you have to really focus on the shade and not necessarily the ground cover.
Okay, so we're waiting on something for approval for these guys, right?
Engineering report.
Engineering report, okay.
Revised plans. I think we'll be all set next month.
What's the best way to do it? Continue it?
Just continue to next month.
So, we'll continue, leave the public hearing open? Continue the hearing and have you guys come back next month and finalize things.
Yeah, and we'll wait for the review, review of the plans that you have right now.
Give me a minute.
And any, if you do change it, if you do change, just get us the changes so we can obviously show them and see them with trees in those spots. Yes, Byron?
Just a comment. Gentlemen, thank you for adding housing to our.
Much needed.
Much needed housing to our city housing stock. Appreciate the project.
Looking forward to it. Appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Sure. Good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Set. Let's move on to the next item in our gentleman's.
Want to make a motion to continue?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Oh, is it?
Did anybody? Yeah? Come up, come up. Yeah, I'm sorry. Come on up.
Did we not open it up to the public?
Yeah, we had a public, yeah, we opened it up. I asked. Come up to the microphone, sorry.
We can't hear you.
Okay.
Thanks, Suzanne.
Hi, Linda Schmidt. I live on Sewell's Falls Road, so I'm down in this area. Just want to say this is so much more family-friendly than Abbott Village, because Abbott Village is so crowded with buildings. I'm the one that drove through it the other day and saw a little boy on his bike with his mom in the street there on Abbott Village, because there was no other place for him to ride his bike. So, this seems like a huge jump and an improvement, so.
Well, the planning staff takes all the credit for that, because they, and that's why she was calling out the applicant, because they've been going back and forth and saying, hey, this is, you should change this, you should change this. So, thank you for recognizing.
We do not take the credit.
No, they take some of the credit.
On top of this.
I'll give you the credit, whether you take it or not.
Thanks, Heather.
Well, thank you for the, thank you for the comments.
They've been wonderful. I was hoping you'd be here, because the comments that you were sending, I thought you would see, oh, this is, you know, really an improvement over what your concerns were that it might be, so.
And you get to come back next month to see the final, if you want to come back next month.
Okay, well, hopefully, the open space will still be there, maybe a playground, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. And again, so that was seven B, seven C. We've got, we've, yeah. Oh, we need a motion to continue. I'd like.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion to continue. And a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. And again, we've continued seven C to next month, and that brings us to other business. Could we read in other business into the record?
Yes. Michael Chapman requests a one-year extension of a minor site plan to add a third unit in an existing duplex at 27 Fayette Street in the downtown residential district. This plan was approved last year, April 20th, 2022, and he says he just, he wasn't able to do some things that needed to be done to get, to move it forward, but he's optimistic that he will, in the next few months, be able to move it forward. So, recommending an approval to grant a one-year extension, subject to all original conditions of approval.
Okay. Would someone like to make a motion to grant that extension as outlined?
It's a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. Are any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. That moves us on to any other business which may legally come before the board tonight. Anything else from staff?
No.
Other than seven fifty-one?
I think there's some people in the audience that were here for something that actually was an accepted determination.
What are you guys here for?
Of the church.
Church got extended. Sorry, the church, they requested that it get pushed off to next month, sorry.
Can I just clarify? So, the church was on the agenda for a determination of completeness, which means there wouldn't have been any public hearing for it. So, they have postponed till next month. They know that that will be simply a determination of completeness as well. So, there will not be any public testimony at that time, unless they ask for it all to be done in one meeting. So, check the agenda. If it's under determination of completeness next month, there'll be no public testimony. If it's under the public hearings and the site plans, you know, then you should come back and we'll be able to provide testimony. And if you have any questions, you can call us and ask us what the status is.
We were just curious where that large building was going to go.
Exactly where the existing building is coming down.
Oh, this one's coming down?
Yep. You know, the little playground? Their building in front of that little playground is proposed to be demolished, and the new building is going right there, and will extend all the way to the corner of state.
Thank you. Sorry, we did it before. Sorry about that. We're moving too fast.
The plans are available online. If you go to this agenda on the city's website, there is a link for the plan, and you can see exactly what's proposed. And there's pictures of the elevations as well. You're welcome.
Okay.
Thank you for coming out.
Thank you. Okay, anything else that may legally come before the board tonight from staff? No? Okay, wow, that was.
Rapid breaking?
All right. If someone would like to make a motion to adjourn, we will. David's making a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No. Thank you. Good night.